Good evening, and welcome to the May 23rd, 2023 Regular Session Meeting of City Council. If you're with us tonight and would like to address council, please register with staff in the lobby. Please indicate Item I for matters that are germane to City Council if the item you wish to speak to is not on the agenda. Light system, three minutes. On our podium, we have a light system. After saying your name and address, the green light will appear. After two minutes, the yellow light will appear. After three minutes, the red light will appear, and we ask that you take your seat. Copies of the city ordinance regarding citizen participation can be found at the desk in the lobby. If you intend to address council this evening, please pick up and review a copy of that ordinance. At this time, please silence your phones. Prior to beginning, the business portion of the meeting, Apostle Price with Holy Ground Tabernacle will provide an invocation to the council. Afterwards, Councilman Long will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. It is the practice of the council members to stand for the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Those who also wish to stand are welcome, but are under no obligation to do so. Thank you.
For I know the thoughts and the plans I have towards you are good and not of evil that will bring you to an expected end. The Hebrew boys who were taken into Babylonian captivity met opposition after they refused to bow to an idol image. Thus, they were thrown into the fiery furnace. Later, King Nebuchadnezzar looked into the furnace and saw individuals walking around inside the furnace. The king asked, "Did not we throw in three?" I see a fourth, and he looks like the Son of God. Mayor Jones, you may meet opposition, but there will always be one with you who will be the Son of God. Be encouraged along your journey. Let us pray. Father, we adore you and we praise you for another City Council meeting. Order Mayor Jones's steps and his staff members as they matriculate through the agenda. Bless our first responders and protect them from hurt and danger. We pray for the City of Newport News and all of their members, all of the residents who cannot speak for themselves. Let the council members speak with wisdom, for wisdom is the principal thing. Therefore, let us have wisdom, but let us have understanding with all our getting, get an understanding. We thank you for who you are. We thank you for what you've done. Have your way in our lives, and we shall continue to give your name the glory and the honor. This we ask in the name of the Lamb of God who taken away the sins of the world. So it is. Amen.
Will you follow me in saying the pledge of allegiance?
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, undivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Public hearings. Page five, Item E1 is a request to adopt an ordinance granting conditional use permit number Charlie Uniform dash two zero two three dash zero 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 two to Stephanie Inc. and WMK LLC to allow for the operation of an automobile sales, new car dealership, and automobile leasing service for wheelchair vehicles on a .46 acre parcel located at six zero nine nine Jefferson Avenue, Zone C1 Retail Commercial. On May 3rd, 2023, the City Planning Commission voted seven oh to recommend approval of Charlie Uniform dash two zero two three dash zero zero two with conditions City Manager recommends approval. Do we have any speakers?
Yes, sir. One, Ms. Lisa Murphy. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the City Council and staff. For the record, my name is Lisa Murphy with an office at four four zero Monticello Avenue in the City of Norfolk, and I'm here today on behalf of the applicant, WMK LLC, which trades as Mobility Works. I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank staff for their work on this application. Mobility Works is a brand-new business to Newport News, and they're very excited to be here. As you may have read, Mobility Works's mission statement is to provide wheelchair-accessible or wheelchair users with mobility, independence, and freedom. Their goal is to provide consumers with more options to find the right van or vehicle appropriate in a city close to their home or travel destination. Mobility Works has 90 showrooms throughout the U.S., only three currently in the Commonwealth of Virginia. Newport News will be their fourth showroom. We're very fortunate that this particular location, which has been vacant for a few years now, as the staff report indicates, this specialized use, which will provide a regional service to the community, doesn't currently exist in the city. And because of the unique size and nature of this business and the operations, this particular site fits perfectly for what they want to do. So I thank you. We appreciate staff and Planning Commission recommending approval. I'm happy to stand by for questions, but we ask that you approve this application as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call to roll, please.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Call to roll, please.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Page thirty-three. Item E2 is a request to adopt an ordinance authorizing zoning text amendment number Zulu Tango dash two zero two three dash zero 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 one, amending and reordating City Code, Chapter forty-five, Article four, summary of uses by district amending permitted uses, education to allow childcare centers within single-family residential districts with the approval of a conditional use permit. On May 3rd, the City Planning Commission voted five-two against recommending adoption of zoning text amendment Zulu Tango dash two zero two three dash zero 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 one to City Council. City Manager recommends approval. Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I think we have a question. Just wanted for clarification. When you were talking about the childcare centers, and I guess Sheila may be the best one to answer that. What does this look like when you go through the conditional use process? When you expand it to, from a home care from four to five, is there a spacing requirement as far as the kids, square footage, is parking requirement, is there any requirement for adults, how many adults to child ratio, which then would go into the parking requirements too as well, because it's...
It really depends on the number of kids that you're asking for. If you're asking for more than four, from five to eight, there's certain criteria. It all requires licensing. It also requires that you provide an ADA-accessible parking space, and it requires that the house is sprinkled. But it's still considered residential. But once you get past eight, when you go to eight to twelve, it begins to be more of a commercial use. We've had requests from people who right now have family home childcare who would like to go to twelve. But once you hit twelve, then it becomes a commercial venture.
But as far as, because I think the concern was the commercial property inside a residential, and I'm more or less thinking about the car, like parking, like if you have so many employees within that childcare center, then you have to have more parking space. And if you come up and do the conditional use permit, a lot of that may be pushed back because you don't have the spacing requirements for parking. So you're not going to have an opportunity to have ten kids in a home-based business.
That's correct, and I think people will understand that there are certain criteria that they'd have to adhere to if they start to get more and more children. And the conditional use permit allows us to meet with them and discuss all the criteria with them prior to moving forward with the conditional use permit and the daycare.
Okay. Thank you.
Just as a point, a home-based business implies that the resident lives there who's operating it, but if it goes up above four, there's going to be no requirement under this that anybody live there. It's basically going to be a commercial facility in a residential area, right?
It could be.
Okay.
A quick question. Do we have an idea how many people this currently would impact if it didn't go through?
No, because we're basing it on the calls that we get, and we received quite a few calls during COVID, people wanting to expand their business. And it was, we didn't have an opportunity for them to do that. This would allow them that opportunity to do that.
Thank you.
And so you can still graduate from the residential to commercial in that same location? It's just different rules?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more discussion? Call to roll, please.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Any discussion?
I would just like to say, as a father of a child that's in need of childcare, we have grandparents right now, I think this is a big win for the city to actually have the allowance for home-based businesses to expand into a childcare center. We have the conditional use permit that helps preserve the character of our neighborhoods, and we also meet the needs. I've heard a lot of parents, and even when we're talking about the military establishment, they'll ask for more childcare capacity in the city, and this is our opportunity to actually get more capacity for these long waitlists that we have seen for residents. So I think this is a good, I think this is a good change to our zoning text amendment. I'll be voting in favor of it.
Any more discussion? Call to roll, please.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Page forty-two. Item E3 is a request to approve a resolution authorizing plan amendment two zero two three dash zero 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 one, the Lee Hall Area Plan, an amendment to the One City, One Future, 2040 Comprehensive Plan for the City of Newport News. The goals and strategies of the plan are closely aligned with the vision and priorities of the city's One City, One Future, 2040 Plan. On May 3rd, 2023, the City Planning Commission voted seven oh to recommend adoption of the Lee Hall Area Plan as amended to City Council. City Manager recommends approval. Do we have any speakers?
Yes, sir.
Diana Henry? You can go ahead and start, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry.
No, you're good.
I am Dr. Dinah Powpe Henry, and I live at 90 Anchorage Drive for 35 years. I am a member of the Citizen Advisory Committee for the Lee Hall Master Plan. The plan is a good one, but flawed. Its goals are to preserve the historic character, protect the natural resources, improve neighborhood connectivity, and encourage sensitive development. Its flaw is that it does not address per se the future of the Enview properties and the changes that may result. The Citizen Advisory Committee was not allowed to talk about Enview in our discussions on the Lee Hall Plan. We were to ignore the elephant in the room. With the removal of the Weldon Field and Row Concept Plant as presented in the May ninth City Council session, the plan is improved. However, the paragraph on the same page states that Enview will be developed with 500 homes. This was not part of the committee's discussion. Either the paragraph needs to be removed, or a statement needs to be added that the committee were not allowed to discuss Enview development, and that many disagreed with the concept. I do hope that the priorities of history, nature, and sensitive development are honored. The Enview properties are the sites of many marked, unmarked, and barely marked burial sites. Some are marked on the Enview site analysis that you have in front of you. Several more are missing. In addition, the city archaeologist has documented three unmarked graves on the EDA property, probably of enslaved persons. There are unmarked graves of soldiers from both Union and Confederacy. It would be most unfortunate if a front-end loader in the process of creating an access road should uncover remains. Secondly, the approximate 250 acres of EDA property holds about 18,000 trees. The Enview site analysis in front of you categorized the trees as those to be saved because of species or size, and those that can be preserved when possible. Of the almost 18,000 trees, only 78 are marked for preservation. All the rest could be removed. For a concept plan of 500 homes, that is one single tree for every six homes. Patrick Henry Mall would have more trees than Enview. Loss of these trees would be detrimental to both the city's air and water quality. The latest concept plan calls for 500 homes or 1,000 cars. 2,000 cars will be crossing the access road every day. Burning one gallon of gas adds 20 pounds of carbon dioxide to the air. The access road would result in an extra 40,000 pounds of carbon every day to an area deemed by the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Act as resource-protected, and there will only be 78 trees to absorb the carbon. The water, wetlands, and nature need protection, not just when it is convenient to be protected, but when it should be protected. Air quality will suffer, and wetlands would be disturbed. Protect the natural resource with sensitive development. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. John Corstein?
Greeting Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council. I think you all know that the Lee Hall Area, especially Enview Plantation, has been under discussion in this city for over 30 years.
Yes.
It is a very special place, and the city needs to make sure that we get this right. And I think the overabundance of homes takes away from the Sylvan scene that you have at Enview and Lee Hall. I think it takes away and damages the real essence of history that's there. Every step you take is where heroes walk before you, Revolutionary War soldiers, Civil War soldiers, Union and Confederate. It doesn't really matter. They all were trying to preserve concepts of freedom, and those houses that are there without a proper viewshed, you are going to lose your intellectual values that you would see with the architecture and so forth. So I merely want to say today, and I used to work for the city as Director of the Virginia War Museum, and I actually participated in the preservation of Lee Hall and Enview Plantation. And we did so back then because we knew it was right for the City of Newport News. So I call upon you all to do what is right for the City of Newport News and try to balance development with also historic preservation, scenic preservation, streetscape preservation, and the preservation of historic sites. If we do not do it, this is our last chance in Newport News to do so. So I want to thank you all for your considerations in this matter, and I really appreciate your thoughtful and fulfilling decisions made about this Lee Hall Area Plan. So thank you.
Thank you. Christine Gergli?
Good evening, Council. My name is, am I okay? My name is Christine Jakes Gergli, and I am a native of Newport News. Just to refer something that John said, I served on the BRAC for Fort Monroe, and one of the most important things we had was viewshed. And you are not going to get viewshed if you build on Enview or even where Lee Hall is. I served on the Lee Hall Plan Committee for three years. Why am I passionate about the Lee Hall? My family has been here since the 1600s. My great-grandparents moved to Newport News and bought a house in 1896 when the shipyard opened. My ancestors were oystermen, farmers, and shipyard workers. When my great-grandmother died in childbirth with her ninth child, the baby went to live with her sister who was married to a Ripley in Lee Hall. Therefore, I made many trips of driving my grandmother and my mother up to Lee Hall. Other relatives are buried at the church across from Enview, Lebanon Christian Church. Therefore, being a native of Newport News, I care not only about the rural land, which Newport News has left. In addition, I believe that the Lee Hall Mansion and Enview Plantation should remain in a rural area to preserve their history. First, quickly, I want to address the Enview Plantation Plan. Early in the 1990s, there was a citizens' uproar concerning Enview, and they won. They didn't do anything. Again, in 1997, there was another citizens' saving Enview. Then, without the public's knowledge, around 2002, sometime around between 1997 and 2002, the City of Newport News sold the land to EDA so that the citizens could not stop the building in the area. Just prior to the pandemic, a packed room of citizens met in the Lee Hall Firehouse and again expressed their opposition. Of course, it was too late because the land had been given or sold to the EDA. Based on my family reason and my love of history that I spent three years serving on the Lee Hall Plan, we were very successful in accomplishing a plan that the community requested. If you've read the entire plan, you can see where people emailed in and called in their objection to adding houses or anything major in Lee Hall. However, if you really face reality, the plan is completely obsolete because the committee was never allowed to talk about the Enview Plan and its impact on Lee Hall through the traffic, schools, water, all, anything like that. Please consider revisiting the Lee Hall Plan, which will include the Enview Plan with the Citizens Committee, so that a realistic and proper plan can be made to protect Lee Hall. Actually, in the Lee Hall Area, the land of Enview is included. However, we weren't allowed to talk about it for three years. Please save Lee Hall from becoming the same thing Enview Plantation is going to have to endure. Revisit the plan and save Lee Hall for the citizens of Newport News. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. John Gergli?
I'm asking you to withhold your approval of the Lee Hall Plan until it is revised to describe the impact of the EDA-proposed development at Enview, or to make a clearly state that it's only valid if Enview is not developed. The Lee Hall Area Plan has laid dormant since 1997, so why revise it out? What was the hurry? The hurry was because EDA wants to develop the Enview property, and because the public introduction of the Enview development back in 2019 or 2020 went off the rails. They had this thing up at the fire training facility, and it just went nuts. They tried to have a charrette there, and people were outrageous over it. So that's how this thing started with the Citizens Advisory Committee. But by direction by the Planning Department, the plan does not discuss the impact of EDA development, the impact of over 500 families being added to the only 1,500 who live there now. That's a 35% increase in population. The infrastructure that's going to happen for this 35%, the power, the sewer, the potable water, the vehicular traffic this lady mentioned, and the school-aged children in this area. This plan says it has input from Citizens Advisory Committee. I served on that committee, my wife did, the other people here did too. We were not permitted to evaluate the Enview impact because it was owned by the EDA, as if they were some god mighty thing up on a mount, and we couldn't do anything because they owned it. CAC members requested many times to study Enview. The Appendix A1 shows several of those requests. This month, we got, we talked to the Planning Commission, and they recommended taking out the developer's plan that was actually in the document, although we weren't allowed to talk. That plan is out of there now. I think that, at least that is there. It still states that EDA plans to develop Enview, but that's the only direct reference there. In the report, it says the community has emphasized that they must be, that plans like this must be planned carefully. But in the Public Service Appendix where public surveys, 40% of the people said not in favor of any more residential development under any circumstances. That's hardly being planned carefully. This plan doesn't ever acknowledge the impact developing Enview, nor any public opposition developing Enview. I brought a letter in for City Council earlier this week, and if I have a couple spare copies, if anybody's lost theirs, I hope you or your staff have had a chance to look at them. It explains a lot more than I can in three minutes. But please withhold your approval until it is revised to describe, either describe the Enview development, or to plainly say to all the world that it was not considered this plan, it's only valid if Enview doesn't get developed. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, here you go. Thank you, man. Thank you.
Thank you. Ed Whitley?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmen, Councilwomen. My name is Ed Whitley. I live at 403 Minsfield Road South, Newport News, Virginia. I'm here tonight to speak on the historic value of Enview. It was a hospital used by the Union soldiers. It was used by the Southern soldiers. Many soldiers are buried there. We don't know where they're all buried. Why are we trying to tear our history apart and get rid of our history? By tearing down Enview, you're tearing down our history. You have slaves and indentured servants buried on that property. We do not know where. In many of my talks to you over the last few months, I have been asking for the Confederate monument to be placed in four different locations, Enview being one of them. If you have these Confederate soldiers there that do not have a headstone, I recommend that if you have to remove these soldiers from their resting place of over 100 years, to put them on another spot in Enview, and with it, put that Confederate soldier, I mean, that Confederate monument there. I also urge you that if you have to move any of the slaves, indentured soldiers, that when you do that, they do not have headstones. These people are history. They're not just slaves, let's be honest. They're just not slaves. They were human beings. Let us recognize them. I asked the city to put a monument in their behalf on Enview with them as they lay. I'm not asking for anything other than respect for these people, and I'm asking for respect for the men who fought for the South and fought for the North on that property. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call to roll, please.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Motion carried, 7-0.
Thank you. Before we do the vote to approve the resolution, Ms. McCounser, can you come up and just talk about the, where there are graves, lack of graves, just from your perspective as the department head? Thank you.
I spoke with the Department of Parks and Rec, and they, there are some burial sites, but they can, but they can, the only thing they can tell us is that they're not located where development is proposed to happen. But just for the respect of those burial sites, they can't tell you where they are.
And what is the, what is the course of action if someone starts to develop and they unearth individuals?
Well, before they unearth individuals, they would be doing more testing on that particular property to make sure that there is nothing underground.
Could I ask? I called the City Manager because I wanted to know what it is we're voting on tonight. And as I understand it, three acres will be given to Waterworks, correct?
That's an item later in the agenda.
It's not this one?
This is just the Lee Hall Area Plan.
Oh, okay.
The item that you referred to that was deferred last week is later on in the agenda.
It's not this one?
No, this is just the adoption or the inclusion of the Lee Hall Area Plan and the comprehensive plan.
Okay.
And this has, this has no bearing on what you will be voting on later.
Okay.
Also, the plan, the Inview site, the Inview site, the comprehensive plan identifies it as mixed use. So even without this plan, it could still be developed as mixed use.
Because of the current zoning?
Because of the current zoning, and the comprehensive plan identifies it as mixed use.
Any further questions? Thank you, ma'am. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Okay. Call the roll, please.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Against.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Against.
Motion carried, 5-2.
Thank you. Page 158. Item E4 is a request to adopt an ordinance authorizing the City Manager to execute all documents necessary to make offers to acquire by voluntary sell or condemnation a portion of property located at 324 Center Avenue for the Warwick Boulevard Drainage Improvements Project. The scope of the project includes construction of a stormwater drainage system in the southbound lane of Warwick Boulevard, connecting to the existing stormwater systems and outfalling to the government ditch. Stormwater drainage system plans have been developed and require a 1,700 square foot easement acquisition from 324 Center Avenue. An appraisal has been totaled, or has been completed totaling $1,051. Funding for the acquisition is available through previously appropriated funds. The City Manager recommends approval. Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Motion carried, 7-0.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Motion carried, 7-0.
Thank you. Consent agenda. Item F contains the following items. Page 164, minutes of the work session of May 9, 2023. Page 198, minutes of the regular meeting of May 9, 2023. Page 232, resolution affirming the City of Newport News commitment to fund smart-scale grant projects. Page 236, resolution affirming the City of Newport News commitment to fund the locality share of transportation alternatives set aside grant projects. Page 245, resolution affirming the City of Newport News commitment to fund the locality share of projects under the revenue sharing program agreement. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Items F1 through F5, all-inclusive?
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Motion carried, 7-0.
Other City Council actions. Next on our agenda, page 262, item G1. Madam Manager.
This is a request to receive an open bids for granting a utility easement over city-owned property located at 100 City Farm Road.
Give me one second.
You didn't get the same from your side.
No, I didn't. I don't want to use that. We have a bid from Dominion Energy for $1.
I really think they need to go up 25 cents.
Page 277, item G2. Madam Manager.
This is a request to approve a resolution authorizing the City Manager to execute an agreement for facility ownership transfer between the City of Newport News and the Hampton Road Sanitation District, and I recommend approval.
Are there any speakers? Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Motion carried, 7-0.
Page 294, item G3. Madam Manager.
A request to approve a resolution authorizing and directing the City Manager to execute the second modification to the lease between the City of Newport News, Virginia, and John R. Lawson for 8,000 square feet of space located at 611 Dresden Drive for the Newport News Police Central Precinct, and I recommend approval.
Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yeah, it's just, I'm understanding this is expanding the current police station that is there.
No, I don't think it's an expansion. I think it's just a renewal of the lease.
A renewal of the lease, okay. It's not an expansion of any kind. Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Motion carried, 7-0.
Thank you. Page 300, item G4. Madam Manager.
This is a request to approve a resolution authorizing and directing the City Manager to execute the Second Amendment to License Agreement bind between the City of Newport News, Virginia, and the Hampton Newport News Criminal Justice Agency for office space in the Justice Building at 2501 Washington Avenue, and I recommend approval.
Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Motion carried, 7-0.
Page 308, item G5. Madam Manager.
This is a request to approve a resolution approving the consolidated plan for housing and community development annual action plan for FY 2023-24, including the proposed use of Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership Funds and certifications, and to authorize submission to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, and I recommend approval.
Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I do have a comment. I looked at the plan. I'm in favor of this resolution, but I saw where the Link and the Minsfield House has funding, but we don't have, I don't see any funding for permanent supportive housing, and I think that's where we need more funds so we can address the homeless population that we have in the city. So next year, talk about how do we get more funding to address the permanent supportive housing portion of our need?
Sure, we can give you more information on what funding, what other funding's out there in addition to it.
All right.
Sure. We have that work session on housing.
Okay, thank you.
And that part, Councilman Long, it mainly is what's allotted from our Community Development Block Grant Funds and which have been shrinking from the federal government for years, so we have less to allot. But I want to just thank Tricia Wilson and Teresa for all of the hard work. The entire committee. I serve as chair for the Community Development Block Grant Committee, but without them, we would not be able, be successful. So the team worked very hard to be able to, even with the shrinking dollars from the federal government, they continued to be able to spread things out in the community so that everybody can take advantage of the funds to be able to improve our city. So point well taken.
Thanks.
Any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Motion carried, 7-0.
Thank you. Page 320, item G6. Madam Manager.
This is a request to adopt an ordinance authorizing an encroachment upon the Museum Parkway right-of-way and authorizing the City Manager to execute an encroachment and maintenance agreement between the City of Newport News and the Mariners Museum for the construction and maintenance of the proposed Martha Trail, and I recommend approval. And I see there's a representative from the museum here.
I see him. Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Motion carried, 7-0.
Thank you. Page 336, item G7. Madam Manager.
This is a request to adopt an ordinance to amend and reordain Chapter 31, Pensions and Retirement of the Code of the City of Newport News, Virginia, Article 2, Employees Retirement Fund, Division 5, Eligibility for Receipt and Amounts of Retirement Benefits, Section 31-64, Eligible rollover Distribution, Section 31-64.1, Limitations on Benefits, Division 7, Administration, Section 31-73, 3, Changes or Errors in Records Resulting in Erroneous Calculations or Payments, and I recommend approval.
Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yeah, I would just like to, are these coming into, with the state? Is that what, I'll defer to the city attorney, but there's a...
A lot of the joint service changes that were required, we had to do this to be consistent with IRS and state.
The IRS, okay. And with state as well?
I think there were a couple that were state.
Okay.
Some were under us.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Motion carried, 7-0.
Page 344, item G8. Madam Manager.
This is the item that was referenced earlier, and it's a continuation from your last meeting, and it's a request to adopt an ordinance authorizing and directing the City Manager to execute any and all documents, including deeds, necessary to effectuate the exchange of a portion of city-owned Waterworks property at 13,800 Jefferson Avenue for a portion of Economic Development Authority-owned property at 350 Yorktown Road, and I recommend approval.
Are there any speakers?
Well, Mr. Whitley, I'm not sure.
This was already in public hearing last meeting.
I'm not sure.
Oh, so you get, it's closed? It's closed?
Oh, okay.
Perfect. Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Motion carried, 7-0.
Appropriations. Page 351, appropriations. Item H, Madam Manager.
Yes, we have two. The first is a request to approve a resolution appropriating $100,000 from the local criminal justice training academy fund to support Newport News Police Department training. And the second item is a request to approve a resolution appropriating $600,000 from the fiscal year 2023 bond authorization, community development category, in support of southeast community redevelopment, and I recommend approval of both.
Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to approve items H1 and H2, all-inclusive?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the rolls, please.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vic?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Motion carry, seven zero.
Next up will be citizen comments, item I, on matters germane to city council. I will call each name in the order that it appears in front of me. I don't see Mr. Ed Whitley. Is he, is he in the atrium? Yeah, I know. I just want to give him his time. Okay. Ms. Bazemore?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Mayor and members of council. My name is Janie Bazemore, and I reside on Hampton Avenue in the city. My heart aches for the students of Huntington Middle School and for my community, because again and again, we are forced to sacrifice. There is a proposal now by the, um, school board and school division to once again bust the zone Huntington Middle School, sixth graders to middle schools above Mercury Boulevard, because of the conditions of the trailers that they're in, that serves as a classroom for them at Heritage High School. Trailers that are without access to bathrooms and water. Conditions caused by the former city council's failure to put quality education for our children above parking garages and a tech center that is almost useless. We profess to be professional adults, but we have failed our middle school students in the southeast community. Almost five years ago, the doors of Huntington were closed. That same year, twenty eighteen, the school division presented a comprehensive plan to the city council for rebuilding Huntington on its current site. The former mayor flat out rejected the plan. There was no vote by the city council. The two point eight million dollars that was allocated for the plan and design of Huntington Middle School was taken back, never received by the school division. The city has placed Huntington under public buildings. Is this in order to now control the funding and building of the school? The city is already in violation of the memorandum of understanding, because they are not being apprised, the, the school board is not being apprised of timelines, et cetera, with respect to the Huntington project. Again, city managers and city councils do not build schools. It is a responsibility cited by the Virginia Code as belonging to school divisions and school boards. We ask this current council to do the right thing, return the control of the funding and building of Huntington Middle School to the school division and board, reject the plan that has been voted on by the city council, that has never been voted on by the city council, and allow the school division to use the current land that Huntington is on. Five years is too long for our children to have suffered the failures created by adults. Huntington Middle School shall rise again. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Pam Hall?
Good evening. I'm Pam Hall, and I live in the southeast community. Our Huntington students and faculty are trapped in a time warp and feel unwelcome at Heritage. They have been unable to enjoy the entire middle school experience, as the city has held up the rebuilding of a new school for more than five years, because outsiders think they know what's best for us. The legacy of Huntington lies not only in the name, but with the land where historic events occurred. It would be more meaningful to the southeast community and the students to keep the continuity at thirty-four oh one Orchid Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Kima Love?
Good evening.
Good evening. God bless you. Uh, yes, hi, everybody. Um, she's laughing. Uh, how are you? How's everybody?
Doing well, thank you.
Everybody good? Everybody good? Um, purple's your favorite color, right?
It is.
It is. Well, I came up with a brilliant idea. I'm Aquarius, February eighth, can't help it. Um, we're going to paint the town purple. We're going to paint the seven cities purple. We're going to paint the conference of mayors purple. Um, the hundred-second anniversary of Black Wall Street massacre is coming up, May thirty-first through, uh, June first. Um, I always cry to God, what are we going to do about the critical race theory, all the other, trying to hinder the truth about our history coming forth for our children, as well as everybody. I'm learning things today, and I'm a hundred years old. I'm still learning things today. So, the thing is, I want to get students to drop off one purple flower for each of the ten thousand residents of Tulsa at the time, special for the three hundred who were massacred plus, and the over three hundred black businesses, right here. And, uh, the color purple, God loves purple. And so, um, I also did make something for you. I gave it to somebody to, oh, you did? You got it? Hallelujah, Jesus.
Thank you.
Lord have mercy, Jesus. Okay. Mm, mm, mm. You know how you got it, right?
My parents gave it to me.
And you know how they got it?
They told me.
Yes. It's amazing. I'm telling you, God just keeps on blowing my mind. He keeps humbling me, you know? She looks like my daughter. Uh, it's the first time I saw a close-up. Um, so, what do you think about that? Because we want to just, you know, in such a way that's not going to cause people to just, um, you know what happens when we think about slavery and all that other kind of stuff. But we do, not forgetting any of it, but we have to move forward productively while educating ourselves and educating our children. Uh, we want to get our black male preachers into the school system, you know, like they do up there, you know, the hooping and hollering, um, at the podium in church. We, we want to get them in this classroom doing it the same way, okay? And metal detectors? No. We need them to hug these little black boys. We need them to hug them, you know, until we squeeze the Jesus out of them or into them or something or other, okay? So, mm, something like that. So, God help us. And thank you. Oh, my God. You know, I had an idea for you to model. I'm a fashion designer. That's how I became homeless. The management didn't want me to set up my business at home. So, they put me out. God didn't kill them. I said, why didn't you just kill them? But he don't listen to me, okay? So, anyhow, my homeless ministry began. And I'm glad I had a chance to be homeless, to see the reality. So, God has shown me how to not be upset about what I'm seeing, but how to take it and turn it into something, a vehicle that's going to carry us to Paris, to launch our homeless fashion line, and some other things. It's taken a hundred years for me to get to this place, but I think I'm finally here. And I didn't cuss today.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Simon Purnell?
Greetings.
Greetings.
Peace and blessings.
Peace and blessings.
I am Simon Purnell. I would like to reiterate an attempt to inspire a more diplomatic approach to improving our African-American communities here in Newport News. Here in Newport News, we would like to bring to your attention a significant and historical event that made a great impact in American history. At seventeen seventy-five, the British Crown imposed an increase in taxes on the thirteen colonies here in America. Its increase in taxes then caused the Revolutionary War. Most members of our African-American community are experiencing a similar fate as to those of the thirteen colonies. We have been consistently imposed with an increase in taxes since Newport News was incorporated as a city. We would like to suggest, under your city council, a, a committee be formed exclusively focused on the preservation, restoration, and revitalization of our African-American community. Thank you.
Thank you. We, we have, we have two more comments. I'm just going to make a, uh, an observation. Um, so, this summer, we're going to revamp boards and commissions that we have in the city. Um, some are going to be added, some are going to go away. One that is, is probably going to be added is a community remembrance, uh, uh, board. That's probably going to encapsulate what the last two speakers talked about, but it is going to be community-driven and led. Just wanted to put that out there as a sort of warning order. Okay? Thank you. Uh, ta, sorry, I'm under the weather. Thomas Kearney?
Honorable Mayor, City Council, how y'all doing?
Hi.
I'm Spirit. I represent ODU's, uh, wi, um, Work Integrated Learning Project, uh, the WILL Project. Um, a lot of you met me last, uh, fall and in the beginning of the year. Um, our program is dedicated into curbing gun violence in the Newport News area. Um, we've had up to fifteen participants in our program. And what we're here to do today is to say thank you, citizens of Newport News. Thank you, uh, city council for your referrals and your support. Some of you have come to some of our programs. We deeply appreciate you. Um, our current program that we're doing right now, um, these participants are ending that program in August, and will be continuing the program in October. But, um, coming to you today with Mr. Daquan Whitlow, he has some things he would like to say to you guys. And, uh, also I have Ms. Antalia Scott. She has some things to say. Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Daquan. How y'all doing today?
Doing well, thank you.
I needed the WILL program because of my bad behavior at school and at home. I didn't do what my mom or my teachers wanted me to do. I gave them a lot of backdoor, I fought a lot. Sometimes I was a bully. I was hanging down a bad path. Then I met Mr. Loud and Mr. Spirit. They went from the WILL program. They helped me understand my behavior. They helped me get my emotions in check. Today, I'm better at listening to my mom, better at taking directions at school, and I only fight to defend myself. The WILL program is helping me to be better. I'm glad to be a part of it.
This is Antalia Scott, coming up.
Good evening, city council and mayor. Um, my name is Antalia. I didn't think I needed the WILL program or any program for that matter. Um, however, since I've been in the WILL program, it has helped me realize a lot about myself, and that it's okay to accept help from other people. Um, which is why I'm grateful to have the WILL program and Loud and Spirit as my mentors. Um, I met Loud after I ran away in February. Um, and he introduced me to the WILL program and the other mentors that has helped me out with a lot. Um, he's helped me at home and at school. He would go to my school to, you know, check out how I'm doing in my classes and how I'm doing with my grades, and then at home with my attitude towards, you know, my parents and also my other, my other family members. Um, but I feel like the WILL program is a great chance for youth and also young adults to get themselves on the right track and in order for them to focus and to be able to succeed on the goals. Um, he has helped me stay on the right path, and they've helped me do a lot of good for myself, which is why I'm grateful to have Loud and the WILL program.
And finally, at the last, we got Loud C. Brooks, out by Virginia Radio.
Hello, council and mayor. Um, yeah, we just want to thank the City of Newport News and, um, everybody.
Everybody.
Um, if you have anybody that wants to, um, get a little help in life, you know, you can, um, send them over to us, and we'll do our best to help them. And, um, please, thank you for your, um, support and your letters of support. Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys. That's all the cards that I have. Our next item will be new business. Madam, uh, we'll go, we'll go in order. That's fine. Madam Manager?
Nothing, sir.
City Attorney?
Nothing, sir.
City Clerk?
Nothing, sir.
Councilman Long?
I want to make a resolution to cancel the regu, regular council meeting of July eleventh, twenty twenty-three, and rescheduling that same meeting for July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing?
I would just note that Councilman Long has a written motion in front of him that he can make.
Then all of us have a copy of.
Okay, yeah, everyone has a copy in front of them. We have the resolution right now that's going to, uh, for those, we're, we're, we're only doing one council meetings for July and August, moving it from the second to the fourth of July. So, we're going to cancel the regular council meeting of July eleventh and reschedule it for July twenty-fifth. We have moved and seconded. Can someone call the roll?
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vic?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Motion carry, seven zero.
Thank you. Councilman Long, anything else?
I have nothing else.
Councilwoman Vic?
Oh, I don't have anything tonight, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Yes, I do. I want to thank all of you for coming down and speaking, and, and I want you to know that we have a number of boards and commissions that you all can sign up for and be a part of our government, and your ideas for our, our city here to help us run this city. I don't think a lot of you know about these boards and commission, but if you get on, on the, uh, our webpage, you can click on boards and commissions and look at the different ones that you have a choice of being able to, um, being able to sign up and help us run the city. It is important for your input to be heard, not just here, but generally. And so, I would encourage you to look and do that. I also wanted to congratulate, uh, Councilwoman Vic, who has, is, or I guess you were going to do this, weren't you?
That's fine. You can, you can both do it.
On her new appointment as the vice chair of the, uh.
Virginia First Cities.
First Cities.
First Cities, yes.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
And she'll be a real asset for us. I know that.
Thank you.
And again, I thank you all for coming down and for expressing your opinions. I want to say just one word about Inview, because that has, as we've heard tonight, has been going on for so long. But I want you to know that when we made a decision about who we would like to see that project go to, this particular company has done a preservation of historic sites and, and is so sensitive to that kind of thing, that I hope that you will be open to looking at what they are proposing. And, and I just think, you know, knowledge is so important, that sometimes we, we miss the facts of what really is going on. But they are so sensitive to historic preservation, that the company that has been, or at least we have voted on, is really sensitive to that. And I, I hope that you won't rush to judgment. I hope you will listen to what they're proposing, because they're not asking us to run over graves, and they're not asking us to forget about the land. They are very ca, careful, so please make yourself informed about it. And if you have any questions, call me, any of us, and know what is really being proposed. Thank you again.
Thank you. Councilman Ely?
I'd just like to thank all the speakers that came out today. Um, it's, it's definitely, your voice is definitely heard. I'd like to thank the young people who came out and spoke. Y'all did a great job. Keep up the good work and keep following your path of life. Thank you.
Councilman Harris?
And, uh, same, thanks for everyone who's came out on tonight, uh, to be a part of the meeting, and those that were engaged in sharing your, your comments. And always good to see so many young people here with us on tonight. And speaking of young people, I do have, I have the right name this time, of, uh, a young person we want to highlight on tonight. If I could have Mr. Amir Thompson to stand up? If we could look at this young man, Amir Thompson. And the reason I wanted to highlight him on tonight, because I received a call from his principal, Ms. Kelly Stewart from Jenkins Elementary School, and she told me all these wonderful things about this young man. So, I said, he needed to come on out, um, and I'm glad he was able to stay the whole time, because hopefully he can get a couple pictures with, uh, some of our council members, uh, to remember this moment. But he is a fifth grade student at Jenkins Elementary School. This is his first year at Jenkins, I'm being told. And being that this is his first year, he's brought so much to the school community, uh, from what I have heard. Uh, he's currently a scholar athlete, as he is on the honor roll, and he played or participated on the first ever Jenkins student basketball team. And also, he's been acknowledged and recognized as a student leader in the building in his first year at Jenkins. Well, first and last year at Jenkins Elementary School, uh, being that he's a fifth grader moving on to middle school. Amir is respectful, little quiet, yet he's a student who always shares his great ideas on how to make this world and community a better place. So, I need to have some conversations with you a little later on. Uh, Amir's here this evening with his family. If his family could just raise their hand, all his family members who showed up. And being told, they are his biggest supporters. And from what I've been told also from the principal, he's going to continue to do great things. The future's bright. Keep striving for success as you get ready for middle school next year. So, um, thank you for being here on tonight, and, uh, we just wanted to highlight you, so that City of Newport News can see, uh, this great young man, along with some of the other great young people who are here on tonight with the program. Uh, but, uh, we just wanted to make sure, we, we shouted you out for, and hopefully you continue to do great things. But we know you're going to continue to do great things. So, thank you for being here on tonight with your family. Um, and you can have a seat, um, as we give you a round of applause. And I can't get off this diass tonight without saying a very special happy birthday to my beautiful wife, which is tomorrow. Um, she'll be celebrating her birthday tomorrow, and, uh, I wanted to make sure I acknowledge her and all the great things that she has done. And hopefully, we could celebrate, have a good time, as she is getting a year older and getting even more beautiful. So, um, happy birthday, machine, and I'll see you later. And that's all I have on tonight.
Vice Mayor?
Nothing, sir.
Okay, I just have, uh, two things, so.
Excuse me, can I go?
Yeah.
I want to wish our wonderful city clerk a some well-deserved time off, because she's going on a little vacation. And I am so glad she's going to have a few days without us, and I'm sure she is too. Congratulations. All in favor?
Thank you. Uh, just, uh, two comments. So, one, uh, thunder a little bit stolen, but I'll let you have it. But, uh, I can remember right after the election, that the first lunch that I had in November was, was with Tina, and I said, Tina, I cannot do this without you. You're the heart and soul of this council. And so, for you to be recognized as vice chair of the First Cities is a big thing, and, uh, we're all really excited for you. So, we'll do one, one round of applause. And, uh, Dr. Woodbury, stall thunder with Lee Hall once again. But no, I think it's important to understand the entire city, uh, a city that needs development, a city that needs more housing, a city that has to preserve its historical landmarks. And so, afterwards, I'll come talk to the, uh, the Lee Hall contingent. We will make sure that the system is, is done and, uh, everything that we do is done in the light, and we're going to make sure that everyone agrees going forward. Um, but I do think it's important, like, that is going to be the future of the city, and we have to make sure that, I think the company that was picked, um, is, is highlighted, is, is going to be very good. And we need to make sure that we have community involvement in that process going forward. And, um, I think that's all I have. So, without anything else, we stand adjourned. Thank you.